I have not seen Councilor Burns on the participant list.
All right.
We do have a call.
Have you? Okay, just want to make sure. All right, first item is visitors' public comment. This is an opportunity for those of you that would like to speak on something not on our agenda this evening to speak to the council, you would have three minutes. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to address council this evening? Seeing none, is there anyone online?
Please raise your hand online if you do.
I think Mr. Kaplan has his hand raised. Good evening, Jan.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Whenever you want me, will allow me or invite me to speak, I would be glad to.
So, did you want to speak to us on something not on our agenda, or did you want to speak to us on the DHS?
That's on your agenda, so that's where I would like to speak with you.
All right, thank you, Jan.
You bet.
Anyone else online who would like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Burns has joined.
Excellent. Anyone else like to speak who's online? Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, this is not Laura Kenny, this is Cynthia George. I'm using my daughter's computer. Uh, I'm calling in because I'm really hoping, Rod, that you will consider stepping down as mayor. I've sent letters in, and as you know, I am the person that was talked about in that letter that has been abused by you in multiple occasions in these meetings. And it's sad that you haven't taken the time to listen to what the community has been saying online. I know I have. And I also sat next to the police chief and some of our community members in many of those meetings. I had one student actually mention that you were their coach, and the appalling way you were treating them. As they laughed, they said, oh, you should see the way they treat us, you know, because of course I was being ridiculed in the meeting. So this is all known behaviors from you, Rod, and it's time, you know, we all get to our end of our ropes and at times, and you know, I've been there with you guys many, many times. I would never ever consider myself being worthy had I have raised a hand on a child. So from this day, as far as I'm concerned, you're not worthy to be sitting in that seat. So, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone else online wish to address council? All right, hearing none, we will move to consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before you move on to the consent agenda, I would just like to mention on the record that Cynthia George did provide a written comment to the council via email to the city recorder this afternoon. Since she had the opportunity this evening to provide public comment on the record, that statement will not be read into the record, but will be provided to council subsequent to this meeting for your information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have the consent agenda which includes the 11:05 2025 City Council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
We'll approve the minutes as presented, or the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Frank, seconded by Jackie Kaufman to approve the consent agenda as presented. Would you take a roll call both, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Burns? He can't talk.
She's muted.
Councilor Burns, yes or no?
Councilor Burns, you're muted, if you could unmute yourself, please? There we go.
Action.
Sorry, answer yes.
Thank you. Councilor Keating? Council, Council President Mix?
Yes.
Council Kaufman?
Yes.
Councilor Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Cross?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our next item is community service reports and our presentations to the council. Tonight, we have a presentation by the VFW for Toledo Police Officer of the Year.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll say a couple things about the individual getting this award. He's been with us for about a couple of years now, and we've had...
I'm really sorry to interrupt, would you mind using the microphone?
Oh, yes.
For the record, you can use mine too if you'd like.
No, 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 appreciate that.
Thank you.
The year now?
Yes.
So I just want to say a couple things about Officer Gunn, he's been with us for a couple of years now. And he's, we've gotten nothing but great comments from the community staff. And, and he's just gone above and beyond, and this award is for 2024. And he has, he has excelled so much that we've actually made him a field training officer, and he's, he's in there influencing our new officers. Right now, actually, so I think he's just, he keeps on growing and growing and growing, and he definitely deserves this, this award and this recognition from the VFW. And, nothing else, I can, I can go on, but nothing else comes to mind as, as far as the excel that he has, is shown or his career. So, I'm super impressed by him, he's always got a great smile when he comes in, it always makes you feel good, so I'll hand over here.
Thank you, Chief. One minor correction, we're now working on a July 1 to June 30 fiscal year, yeah, fiscal year, really. So, this award is actually for the 2425 year. For those of you who don't know, VFW believes that periodically those who protect and serve our community need to be thanked. And that is my purpose here this evening, specifically with regard to the Toledo Police Department. And so first, I want to thank Chief Pace and all of his staff for the great work that they do. Also each year, we ask the leadership team of an organization to select an individual that they think has had a particularly outstanding year maybe, or career, or whatever their criteria may be. VFW has only one criteria, and that is that they must be a sworn police officer or firefighter. And so I like to tell each recipient that this is much recognition by your leadership team of your fine job as it is by VFW. And as Chief Pace has announced, the issue recipient will be Officer Ryan Gunn. I have two things for the officer, one is a certificate of appreciation from VFW. The other is a plaque with his name inscribed on it that hangs in the Toledo Police Department, and each year we add that year's recipient to that plaque. And so I don't have enough hands here, so it's okay. Set the microphone back down, or maybe Chief, you could hold it?
Absolutely.
And so, first thing I'd like to do is to present Officer Gunn with our recognition certificate and offer our particular thanks to you, sir, for the work that you're doing this year, and congratulations on receiving. Second thing I would like to do is to present to you the plaque, which again will hang in the Toledo PD. Hopefully for a long, long time, Chief. And your name has been inscribed in the appropriate place for the 2425 year, and so I would like to present that to you as well. Of course, I'll expect you to give it to the chief, because I'm going to ask him for it. I'm asking for it next year. So, that concludes, Mr. Mayor, my comments, and again, I want to say a thank you to the Toledo PD and Chief Pace for the great job that they're doing protecting and serving our community. And with that, I am concluded, and thank you for allowing me to do this.
Yay.
On YouTube?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we'll do this.
Come on, you got one?
I was gonna do a selfie.
Someone who can take a picture of all of us, appreciate it.
I think you got a few folks willing to do that.
All right.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will take my leave of the chair.
See you next year.
At this time, we'll take a couple minute recess, in case you, you are welcome to stay, but you don't have to. So we'll take a quick two minute recess. Okay. All right, it's back in order. Our next item are discussion information items, this is part of our normal work session. First one is Justin Peterson, our planner. Justin, you have a presentation for us this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll have a verbal presentation, but last two meetings, well, I guess last meeting, I had my planning commission meeting. In between, the council asked that I provide some more background information on the, so the irrevocable petition for public improvements, or often referred to as deferred maintenance agreement. So this, this agreement is kind of a standard practice that the city of Toledo has used and other, other cities do use. But it's a time where a property owner desires to place certain improvements upon their property, which require the budding street to be improved to a city standard. So then, at, petition for the public improvements, the deferred part is to provide orderly, cost-efficient improvements, the city is willing to defer the petitioners, property owners required improvements until such time as the improvements can be combined with adjacent improvements. So that's kind of the official language in the agreement, but essentially, the cities use this often. So for partition applications, so when a property owner's dividing, dividing a property, it has been used. Or if a home is being built that currently doesn't have any sidewalk connections, so that, then the deferred maintenance agreement comes into play. So then, at the time the full street is improved, then they would be responsible for their frontage of those improvements. So it's deferring that improvement to the future. So it's giving, it is providing that flexibility to where you don't have to make the improvement at the time of development, but at a later period of time. The, just to address the specific case that was mentioned at the last meeting. So there was a, actually a older conditional use, which was CU, conditional use dash 3-98 for the, for Forest Harris Church adjacent to Lincoln Way. So at that time, there was an approval for that conditional use to, for the property to be used as a church. And then, the agreement at the time was actually that the improvements could be deferred up to three years. However, just, sometimes it occurs where things get missed, but those improvements never occurred to Lincoln Way. But most recently, the city received a request for a modification to that conditional use to add a, basically a building for storage there on the concrete pad adjacent to the, the primary building. And then the city, as part of that, reworked it and still required the deferred maintenance agreement, but didn't have the three-year timeline in the conditional use approval. So part of that requirement was that a deferred maintenance agreement, or the irrevocable petition, gets signed by the property owner. So that was the specific case that we were, that was mentioned at the last city council meeting. I did, I guess the last part, and then I can take questions. I did talk to Jim Chambers today, he stopped by the office to talk about the, the agreement. The, there does seem to be some agreement to move forward. We don't have a signed agreement yet, but we did kind of discuss kind of through the agreement a little bit more. And then I do want to say that he mentioned there is a section of our code that talks about local improvement districts. So specifically, or specialist, they're often called special assessment districts, but chapter 1308 is the chapter, but that's the process for creating a special district or a local improvement district. And part of what the language that is in the irrevocable petition of republic improvements is some language that the, that property owner won't, basically, it does not have the right to talk against that future local improvement district, because they've done those improvements and signed the irrevocable petition. But I will say that that section of code is older, from the seventies, it looks like the last time it was updated. So that is a section of code that could be reviewed in the future by city council, if it was a priority to, to look to make sure that we are fully in compliance with, for that code section with, with state, state law.
Any questions, council? So I got, I have a question, Justin. So if I understood former Mayor Chambers' discussion at our last meeting, part of the question that he's having is that, say, an LID is formed, that even if those requirements go beyond what is currently listed in the document that you want them to sign the irrevocable petition, those, in other words, what I'm saying is that, so let's say now all we require is sidewalks and gutters, but if the LID comes through and says you gotta have sidewalk gutters, special lights, special treatments or whatnot, they would have to pay all of that. And so my question is, is could there be something in the code or in these agreements that we still have it, but it binds into what is currently the standards, what the standards are on the date of the signing?
Yeah, that, that is a good question. We, so in the, each agreement, we do list out curbs, gutters, sidewalks in terms of the specific items. We, I don't have a case study or an example in terms of when a local improvement district was formed, or a special assessment district was formed in the city of Toledo. It hasn't been, as you can tell by the age of the code, it hasn't been something that was, it has been used frequently. But to answer, to answer your question, I'm not 100% sure, and that might be more of a, a legal question in terms of what we could require, if there's an extra piece, you mentioned lights as an example, but that, yeah, I am not 100% sure.
Be kind of corny, though, saying, okay, we're going to require you to do this, but just so you know, you know, if something else cuts up later, you're gonna have to do that, too.
Yeah, the, the thing I'm looking at is, in my, just in my time here, we've had many standards change on what is an acceptable street, what is an acceptable width, what's the size of the sidewalk, so on and so forth. And I guess what I'm getting at is that instead of having, for lack of a better word, an open-ended check from that entity, we have a guarantee that it will be, that they're, they will pay for the portion that they would have paid at that time. In other words, if the only thing we required was curbs, gutters, sidewalks, then when it comes down later and we're adding three or four other things, those three or four other things, they don't cover. Because they've agreed to do what was to be done at the time they signed it. So that it's not just essentially a blank check for people to do whatever they need.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to schedule a meeting with the city attorney and get legal, the city's legal counsel, their insight on that question. The one thing that I would, I would add is that, as you all know, the city can be more restrictive than state law, but not less. So if we were to sign an agreement with any property owner in the city of Toledo today, or, you know, say this year, on one of, one of these types of projects, and then in 30 years, we go to do the, the project, if the state has implemented a requirement that is more than what was at the time, obviously, the city would have to enforce that. So if we have it in, in code, for example, that the property owner is only responsible for those things that were required at the time that the agreement was signed, then it would become the city's responsibility to do whatever those, those new state requirements are since then, and we would need to plan for that in our, our budgeting process.
Correct.
I think, I think that would be a totally fair way to do that. I will, as I mentioned, I'll check with the, the city attorney on the legality of your question, and I'll, I'll provide council an update at your next meeting.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this matter?
Before you do that, Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Peterson might have already had it.
Sorry, Justin.
Just one more piece, I think the, I think one key part of the language is that it's, the city is willing to defer the, the improvements. So the property owner oftentimes, instead of doing the improvements now, they're deferring them to a later period, so that there would be a level of certainty in terms of we know the current standards now in terms of those improvements. But yeah, it is hard to predict what the future, future standards are in terms of curb and gutter. I will say they have stayed more consistent with our transportation system plan since 2012, but there's always, it always could, could change.
Correct. Thank you, Justin. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council on this topic? Anyone online?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no one else, I do have just some general comments that I think might help inform...
I didn't want to put you on the spot, Savani, but thank you.
Don't worry. So, so basically what I, my understanding is what's in this agreement, and what's typically in these agreements is not, it's, the irrevocable petition part is an agreement not to challenge a decision that the city would have to make through the process of forming that special district. So it's not just that at some time, the, and Justin, please correct me if I'm misstating anything, but it's not just at some time, you're going to come back to all these property owners and say, okay, now we're building a sidewalk, there's a process that the city would still have to go through to do that, which would include planning and information to the public. And the purpose of these agreements, or one of the purposes, is to prevent like a ghost sidewalk situation. So, instead of requiring the landowner to put in their portion of the sidewalk now, which may or may not look like what the neighborhood wants it to look like, what the community wants it to look like when the rest of the sidewalk is built, they can put that off. So there is, in that way, a benefit to the property owner as well, so that they're not, you know, they're not the only ones with a sidewalk in front of their house for years and years, that doesn't really do anything. And to Justin's point about the, the code and the, the age of it, it's quite possible that the property owners who are signing these may never be part of that improvement district, or may never pay those fees, it'll just run with the property. So, even though there can be in, there is a burden on the property moving forward, there's also flexibility for the property owner and a benefit to the property owner in the long run.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak to this topic?
There is, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so, yeah, once again, this is Cynthia George, and I see, what my concern is, and you know, has been that low-income housing development that you're planning there underneath the GP pipes and the wetlands, you know, you know which one. And so now are we going to try and set aside the requirement of sidewalks on a low-income housing development in a flood plain, in a dangerous section of road down there? Is that what this is all about? Because I don't trust that you're not already set up to not follow the guidelines on that housing development, and you already use the lie to improve those water features over there in that area.
Ma'am, please state, please state your main to the topic at hand.
That is the topic, the topic is...
The topic at hand is about the irrevocable petitions.
Are you going to require that housing development, are you going to slack?
Please bring it back to the topic at hand, which are the irrevocable petitions.
Excuse me, sir, it's my turn to talk. The time is, the discussion is, in these agreements, in these developments, and in the future plans, and are you going to already start backsliding on the requirements around that development? That is the topic.
So...
Don't be slacking.
I will reiterate the mayor's comment. This topic is, is germane to a specific request for a, in response to a specific request related to a development by the Four Square Church and the agreement that was negotiated with them, and questions that were brought forward to the council. I will state on the record that there has been no request from Northwest Coastal Housing for any variances to any other requirements for their development. There is no deferred maintenance agreement that has been requested by or is being negotiated with Northwest Coastal Housing at this time.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, council, for Mr. Peterson before we move on? All right, hearing none, we will move on to our next item. Discussion of activities of Department of Homeland Security in Lincoln County. Andrew, I'm going to let you kick us off on this.
Oh, boy. All right. Yes. All right, so I, before I start, I would like to just ask for some questions. I have some prepared remarks that I've drafted up, and they'll take me a few minutes to get through. I also just wanted to acknowledge and thank Mayor Kaplan from Newport, who was on the call here today. the call here today. I know I know that they are dealing with this in a much more direct manner than we are, or at least they have been impacted very directly and very publicly over these past couple of weeks. And so I certainly appreciate indeed his perspective on this matter. I ask for this item to be placed on tonight's agenda after attending last week's special meeting at Newport City Hall and seeing the outpouring of community feedback, because I believe that the real and potential changes happening in Lincoln County demand immediate attention. I want to be clear at the outset, my concerns are not based on politics, but rather on what I see as likely outcomes if the relationship between Lincoln County and the Department of Homeland Security continues on its current path. No matter your your political perspectives, there is real cause to be concerned about our community's future. The Department of Homeland Security has increased its focus on Lincoln County in recent weeks. Of specific importance DHS and its contractors have made efforts to quickly build a detention center for immigration and customs enforcement in Newport. And DHS, which oversees Coast Guard operations, has already relocated the search and rescue helicopter previously in Newport right before the start of crabbing season. Dungeonous crabbing is one of the deadliest professions in the US. While there's an average of 124 deaths per 100,000 workers in commercial fishing in this country, the West Coast crabbing industry experiences about 320 per 100,000 workers. So that's nearly triple the national fishing average, which is already a widely known dangerous profession. The search and rescue helicopter that was moved from Newport is now 30 minutes away by air, which is often the difference between life and death in emergencies at sea. Our local fishermen's wives organization said last week, it's not just a matter of chance that lives will be lost. Lives will be lost if the search and rescue helicopter is now returned to Newport. I can't think of any community, this is slightly aside, I apologize, this is all in bullet form. I can't think of any community where the addition of a detention center has had a positive impact locally, or even no impact at all on the tourism industry of that area. There's a reason why detention facilities of all kinds are typically constructed in more remote areas than Newport. There is no Guantanamo by the Bay Resort and Casino as beautiful as the beaches of Cuba may be. People will choose not to come to our community for their next vacation if we become widely publicized home to an ICE detention center, and it will be published, publicized. It has already reached national media audiences over the last week. That means we can expect that the impact on our tourism is already present. Reduced tourism will absolutely affect our bottom line as a community. Local businesses that rely on tourism will be at risk. Jobs will be lost, will be lost. I've mentioned in previous city council meetings, Toledo has an unemployment rate over 7% compared to the state and county averages, which are a little over 4%. That was well before the closure of one of our largest employers in the county, Rogue Ales, last week. We simply cannot afford to see more people out of work. And we know with absolute certainty that people who work in Newport live in Toledo and vice versa. This is as much a Toledo matter as it is a Newport matter. I mentioned at the beginning of these remarks that I don't see this as a Republican versus Democrat issue here as much as it might feel like it. I have a lot of appreciation for many in our community who want stronger immigration enforcement and have shared on social media in the last two weeks that support ICE operating closer to home. If you're a property owner in Lincoln County, you have good reason to be concerned about the placement of a detention facility here. A study published earlier this year by North Carolina State University showed that the addition of a correctional facility can lead to a reduction in nearby property values by an average of 20%. That's enough to put many homeowners into negative equity. Nobody wants that. Whether or not you are in support of immigration enforcement in the way it is currently being carried out by the Department of Homeland Security, putting a detention center in Newport is just bad business. It hurts too many aspects of our local and regional economy. The costs overwhelmingly outweigh the gains. So if you are in support of more immigration related detention centers, even one in Oregon, I hope you will at least very at the very least join me and others in saying, just not here. Putting one in Newport will likely cause irreversible harm to our economy in a very real, tangible way. In December, in December of last year, Toledo City Council discussed a letter we all received called the Brown Roundup, which encouraged encouraged stalking people based solely on the color of their skin or the language they speak. I was at that meeting as a counselor counselor elect, and I watched the recording of it again this morning as a reminder. In that meeting, there appeared to be a consensus to draft an official declaration from the city against the contents of the Brown Roundup letter, and that declaration would be discussed at the first meeting of January. And whether you were here or not, I'm sure you can put the timing together and recognize that at that same time, we were facing other very large and immediate challenges. And unfortunately, that topic of the declaration never came back to council. Now is the time we need such a declaration. The concerns raised in that letter last year are no longer abstract. They're at our doorstep. We need to show our compassion, that family that everyone who is in our community is welcome and safe here, no matter where their family comes from or what language they speak. More than anything, I believe that we need to tell the Department of Homeland Security that putting the lives of our fishers at risk is not acceptable, that putting two of our areas' most important industries and economic drivers and the workforce that supports them in jeopardy is not acceptable. The city of Newport met for a special session last week with over 800 members of the community in attendance. One result of that meeting was a proclamation this week emphasizing that the proposed detention center is not compatible with the values of the community. I would like to suggest a similar declaration that is also in alignment with the plan this council suggested 11 months ago, that focuses on Toledo's values, this council's values, and emphasizes how these activities by DHS will likely have long lasting negative effects on our citizens, reaching far beyond immigration enforcement. At the end of this discussion, I would like to offer a motion that council schedules a special meeting to draft and approve an official statement from the city on these matters. That is all I have on this. Before we get into a more open discussion, I do want to make sure that I thank Mayor Cross and City Manager Heebner for ensuring this topic was on our agenda in a timely manner. I know that I submitted it slightly outside of the typical format for getting things onto an agenda in short time. Thank you to the council for its strong the council, which I know Stu Strong is here in the audience today, and he was part of that council 11 months ago that spoke very strongly in opposition to that Brown Roundup letter. And I just wanted to emphasize in a very official capacity my appreciation for that council's comments a year ago. And also want to thank all of you for your patience with me as I offered these lengthy remarks, and thank the many people in the community who have shown up, whether in person, at the meeting in Newport, or on social media to voice their opinions regardless of what side of the issue they're on. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Counsel, do you want to go first, or do you want to hear from Mayor Kaplan?
I would like to hear.
Mayor Kaplan.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I Andrew summed things up in a beautiful way. So I don't have hopefully I don't have to say as much other than I everything that he's saying is is ringing true. Well, the places that I would add is one is that city of Newport, our council is has committed unanimously to do everything in our power to 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 stop this development. And we have hired we have hired counsel, outside counsel. We are will be pursuing all legal remedies that that can be pursued. And we're in it for the long run. The point I would one of the things I would emphasize is that we are dealing with an agency or a regime or whatever administration that has treated us, the city of Newport, the county of Lincoln, and all of the surroundings with absolute disrespect and contempt. They have we still have not gotten anything in writing officially, or even a phone call. And that's us as a city, county, our senators, our congresspeople, our governor, who has written again today to Secretary Noem, and we get no answers. That's not the way to start a relationship. And it's telling. It's telling that that this is not have this is just zero caring. And nobody said, how would this affect you? So we're in it because one immediately have to get that that helicopter back. And we need to do everything we can to do that people will die. And it's and it's the fishermen, it's it's the recreational fish fishers, it's the people, it's the surfers, it's our 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 economy here is based on the ocean. And to say, well, if you're if you go in the ocean, you're on your own, is not the position that I think our communities and your community want to be in. And I understand, having talked with Mayor Cross, that that many of our fishermen live in Toledo. So there's your directly, this is your citizens. I agree with Councilman Counselor Keating. It doesn't matter, you know, we have lots, there's lots of different opinions as to how we what we should do about immigration, what we should do about our borders, and there are valid discussions to be had. But how we treat and how our government treats citizens and pulling people, you know, out of their cars, throwing them in the street, and then finding out, then not not knowing that they're criminals, and in fact, finding out most a good portion of the time that they are not, is is not what we want in the streets of our cities. And so I would welcome any questions, for one thing. But I would welcome any kind of support that you as a council can lend to us to go on record. I would also say one of the things that we are working on right now is is a mechanism to for us to pursue this in this whatever length this may go, could run up a lot of legal bills. And we will be we will be reaching out and looking to raise additional funds will be, you know, from we, you know, we've put up money that we have in emergency funds, reserves. But what 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 our what our neighbors can help can help with, what individuals can help with, and we don't yet have the mechanism to do that, that we're working on that. Also, with the concept, since we don't know how much will actually be needed. Should there be overage, and this is something I'm proposing, and I'm not getting any resistance on, should there be overage, we can set up some mechanism that if it's not here, they're going to go someplace else, and somebody else might need help. If we got money left over, we should be forward, we should be paying that forward. So and I'm hoping that I'm hoping that they we raise some money and they say, oh, geez, as one as Counselor Hickman of our council said, they've underestimated us. I'll stop there because I really appreciate the opportunity. And any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mayor Kaplan?
Okay.
Just very grateful that you're here.
Yes. Good to see you, Jan.
Good to see you.
There is a question online.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I I just was hoping that we all stop and take a look at the water situation too, for any type of facility over there, and maybe be able to utilize that as something of an disagreement for anything going, any kind of building going in to the South Beach area. Beaver Creek, I do believe, is the water source for that area, and it was not intended for this kind of use. So regardless, either they can build a D Sal plant and drink the ocean where we've been dumping out of the mill, or figure out some way to provide water over there. I mean, there's no services. There's we don't have the water. So, sir, I hope that that's part of the the fight, is that we can't support anything like that here. We don't have enough water for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any comment?
You know, one of the things that that Mayor Kaplan's comments got me also thinking about was our sheriff participated in a large conversation with the the regional ICE office in Washington. I think it was 38 sheriffs from around Oregon kind of got together to to kind of call a meeting with the regional ICE offices to kind of find out what what their plans are, how they're planning on like what what their operations look like, because there were a lot of concerns. And this is, I'm I'm kind of regurgitating a little bit of how it was presented in the Lincoln Chronicle article that came out this week. But the the main point that our sheriff had was that there's a lot of concerns for for our citizens, for our law enforcement officers, a recognition that the tactics that are being used by ICE that we see on the news all the time involve often unmarked, unlicensed plated vehicles, running other vehicles off the road. And that's a very hard thing for local law enforcement to know is a, say, lawful attempt at apprehending somebody. And there could be some serious safety concerns for our law enforcement who might try to intervene or might see something like that happen. And I apologize, this comment is going to be a little bit political, but one of the things that really sticks with me on this on this issue a lot is that the sort of selling point of immigration reform or immigration enforcement that ICE is supposedly going after is the idea of rooting out violent criminals and people who have done absolute horrible things to our society. Those are the people that our local enforcement law enforcement want to want to go after, too. They do. Every single law enforcement officer in the country wants to get rid of the hardened violent criminals, the murderers, the rapists, those people. So why not work with our local law enforcement? Why not collaborate? And a lot of that comes down to, I think, what we what we heard a little bit of Mayor Kaplan's comments, and also what I think we heard somewhat from from the sheriff's office and from other law enforcement agencies around the country. It's because a lot of these tactics are tantamount to arresting people for driving while brown. And that's not probable cause. That's not a crime. That's not enough to run a family off the road violently, smash their window, and figure out the paperwork later. So there is a part of me that is also very much on the side of saying, if ICE was coming here with good intentions for the citizens of our country, work with law enforcement, work with our local governments, show us good faith, and we'll show it back.
So my remarks are going to be strictly from a practical and logistical standpoint. This move to try and put a detention facility in Newport is so disingenuous, it disingenuous that it goes beyond the pale, in my opinion. Number one, we're in a tsunami zone. We're in an earthquake prone zone. So why would you want to put people there if you're trying to keep them safe and out of harm? Secondly, as anyone who lives here knows, our healthcare system is already stretched to its absolute limits servicing who does live in this county. If we add another, I don't care how many, if you've seen us in the summertime and watch how the ER and the urgent care works in Newport, we don't have enough healthcare in this county to cover an additional however many people you add to it. That's obvious. Those are obvious things. Thirdly, and the thing that really irritates me is the moving of the helicopter, A, without notice, B, without reason, and C, with absolutely no input from from what I've been able to tell talking with Coast Guard officials in other places on this coast, without their knowledge beforehand. Okay, so you've removed the lone helicopter from the busiest fishing point on the entire Oregon coast. Okay, we used to have one in Astoria, one in Newport, and one in North Bend. Okay, we can get almost anywhere on the coast within that 30 minute time period. They removed the one from Tuzbe. The one in Astoria is now up the river. It's not out on the point of Astoria anymore. So even in Astoria, to cover the Columbia Bar, they're 15 minutes out instead of what used to be five minutes out. And if any of you've been over the Columbia Bar, to say that boats go surfing to get across that thing is an understatement. You that's why they have to have roter pilots, because that bar is beaucoup dangerous, not just a little bit. You've lived here long enough to know that, number one, by the oh, I'm just gonna do a rough a rough guess, by the middle of February, if we were on the East Coast, we've already gone through the entire 26 letters of the alphabet to name storms, because gale force storms are pretty frequent here around the first of the year and from December down through. Okay, so the odds of someone drowning was huge because of the weather conditions we have. So moving that helicopter is tantamount to saying we don't care. So moving that helicopter is tantamount to saying we don't care. And the last time I checked, that was the job of the Coast Guard, because they go into that service because they care, they want to help people. And now they're taking and having hands put behind their back for no good reason. We need to get back to where there's a helicopter in Astoria, there's a helicopter here, there's a helicopter in North Bend. And preferably one down in Brookings. To help cover the Crescent City and all of that that goes on in that area. That, that is what would be in a tactical mind efficient. But trying to, to put a detention facility in Newport. Is probably one of the weirdest things anybody could ever have done. Number one, we don't have the infrastructure for it. Ms. George pointed out one of the many things that we don't have. Our summers are already stretched for water, as we learned this year. Okay? We are already on edge every summer on water. Okay? We can't add that. But here we are, we're being told that we're going to do that, that is wrong. That is short sighted. It's not the process that the federal government, at least in my lifetime, generally goes through when they want to cite a facility. They usually talk to Congress first. They don't usually start by saying, here, this is what we're going to do. As the person who brought up the Brown Roundup. And thank you for raising my blood pressure because the memories all hit back. We are, we are not those people. We believe in what the Constitution says and what our Declaration of Independence says, that all men are created equal. All of us. And I don't care what color your skin is, I don't care if you're male, female, or whatever you want to call yourself, we are all here. We are equals and we need to be treated as such. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Burns, so I can breathe. Jackie?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Counselor, Counselors, hey. I'm really struggling here because it seems like it's really two separate issues. One, the number one that's paramount is that, that Newport cannot support a detention center, period. Regardless of what it was there for. And the other part of it is rounding up the illegal immigrants, two separate issues. And, and so when we're looking at this, at this situation, I think it behooves us to separate them. That, you know, deportation is going to happen. And, and that, but it doesn't have to mean that Lincoln County would be the host of the detention center. And, and I, I really hope that we're able to separate them out. That it isn't, it isn't a matter of, you know, it's all or nothing. Because like I said, you know, our, our country has been burdened heavily by open borders. So with that being said, we need to do something, whether it's being done the right way or not, I'm not even going to get into that. Yet it, it is necessary. And, and so I, I just really hope that we as a council can take that into consideration, that it's really about the detention center and, and all of the things that it would bring problematic to our, our county. That's all I have to say about that for now.
Thank you, Jackie. Mayor Kaplan?
Thank you, and I hope I'm not intruding, but I, I really appreciate this. One, one factor that I think we need to be aware of is that we're a sanctuary state and we all know what that kind of means. But in the case of a criminal warrant. Our, our law enforcement are not restricted. Because, so to the degree that, that we, if we have violent criminals that need to be removed, our sanctuary lawyers do not stand in the way of that. But when we start pulling in every, every person who is of brown skin or, or speaks a little differently. And then hope that maybe we caught somebody, that's not the way to go. How, you know, and, and however, whatever the policies and our feelings about that. Because I could get pulled into, out as easily as, as anybody else, my skin's pretty dark, especially in the summer. And I, I worry about that, I worry about that. And I know we have folks, we have received, just, and I'll, I'll shut up because this is your meeting. Of the three, of the over three hundred emails that we received relating to, to this issue, more than half, significantly more than half were for visitors. Both in terms of visitors and our own population, they were, they were opposed to this. But it was a, a, a significant number, and that was well over a hundred folks who said, if this happens, I, one, I, I would not want to spend my money. I would not want to come to Newport, I would not want, want to take the chance of my children being in the streets of Newport and witnessing. So I'll, I'll be quiet, but, but it, this is not about getting in the way of, of removing the worst of the worst, it's, it's protecting the best of the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Yes. I just wanted to respond with, one, a lot of gratitude for Counselor Burns's comments. I, I really appreciated them. And I think that, as I, as I mentioned, I think my goal, and I know we want to be able to open this up to public comment for, for this topic before we would take any votes on this matter, but as I mentioned, I think my intention in bringing this is that I would like to move that we have a special meeting scheduled between now and our next city council meeting so that we can be in support of, of the efforts of our county and in supporting the people in our community at a time that it is most effective. Where we could work out what the actual language or what that message of our official stance as a city is. So Jackie, I think really that's, that's something that we can sit down together with, it's not to be solved tonight. But to be able to kind of give our city attorney or city manager, you know, a go ahead to say, come to us with some ideas of how we could frame this. Based on the conversation that we've had and what is happening in our county right now. And, and let's work on that together in a, in a special session that's dedicated to that. So I, I hope that, I hope that satisfies your concerns about, about what that language could look like and, and how we can shape that.
So you said something about before our next meeting, there are a whole lot of days between here and there that we can actually hold meetings.
I was, I was going to bring that up, thank you.
I was just looking at the calendar, I'm like, no wait, we don't have one next week because of Thanksgiving, so it might be tough to get it before.
So I, I actually, I really appreciated Counselor Keating, the clarification you gave there at the, the end of your comments, because when I first heard you mention a special meeting, I was thinking that you were wanting to to have had something prepared and, and for counsel to to create and act on rather than workshop the message that you were, you were going for. So correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like you're thinking maybe having a special meeting to have that, that open discussion, that workshop. That then staff might be able to bring something at your meeting on December third for counsel to, to act on, is that what you were envisioning?
I think that that's good, yeah.
Okay. So to Counselor Sylvia's point, and I was actually going to, going to mention myself, and I think a few, at least a few of the staff are going to be taking Wednesday, the twenty-sixth as an out of office day. We could potentially hold that meeting on the Monday, the twenty-fourth or Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, depending on council's availability. I don't know that we would need anybody beyond myself, the city recorder and the city attorney, I would need to confirm their availability, but they're both with us tonight, so I, I would be open to council's feedback on your availability on those days.
I would recommend Monday because I know Counselor Sylvia has something he has to do on Tuesday night.
I do?
Yes, you do, I'll explain it to you later.
On Monday, I have my torture for physical therapy morning, so.
Well, no, it would be later.
Is there anything I have to do?
I don't know, I just know what I.
I didn't know if you were doling out assignments or.
You've got the dessert auction Tuesday night, if you don't show up with your kids, somebody's going to get irritated.
Oh, I didn't know what it was.
Thank you.
Is counsel available on Monday, the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Paul, are you available that evening?
You good?
What time are we talking?
I, I believe we would be looking at probably six PM and a normal meeting start time.
Yeah, yeah, that would be okay.
Okay.
Would six PM work, Counselor?
I'll make it work.
Thank you very much, and City Attorney Miller, would, are you available on the evening of the twenty-fourth?
Monday. I believe that I am, it'd be six, six.
Six PM? Washington or Washington, Oregon Pacific time?
Thank you.
I, I say that because the city attorney is in New Mexico at the, at the moment, so she's an hour ahead of us.
Is it warm there?
It was a little chilly, but it was.
Depends on where you're at in Mexico and whether it's warm.
And thank you all for your willingness to do this and rather than that I, that since we, since we worked that out, I can sense that emotion isn't necessary, so. So if my language suggested a motion, I know withdraw that.
You, you mentioned that you were planning a motion, but I don't think you, you made one officially, but thank you. So I will ask the city recorder tomorrow to please issue a special meeting notice for that evening, six PM.
And label it as a workshop.
Yes.
Would you rather have a work session or a special meeting?
I'd call it work sessions.
I have a suggestion on that. So if we call it a special meeting, it gives us the ability to make a decision. And the only reason I suggest that is having, being an option is that we could theoretically come up with the nature of our message and direct the city staff to execute it.
Well, that can also be done with consensus, that doesn't have to.
Oh, okay, okay.
I, I would mention that officially it does have to be a special meeting, because any meeting that's not in your regular meeting schedule is by, by definition of the law designated as a, a special meeting, so we can advertise it as a special workshop.
I feel extra special.
As you should.
Only if you show up.
All of you label it.
We can't have a meeting without me, no.
All right.
Thank you, Counsel.
All right. Next item, decision items, we have a request for council action and ordinance granting Central Lincoln People's Utility District an exclusive electric utility franchise and revoking ordinance thirteen forty.
So many pages.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and in case counsel ever starts to think I'm too perfect, I would like to point out that I had two typos on the RCA. First off, immediately under the background, it says that on April twentieth, twenty twenty-five, you passed ordinance thirteen sixty-one, that should be twenty fifteen. I also labeled it as discussion items, it was placed in the correct place on the agenda as a decision item, so we are asking for council action this evening. So with, with pointing out those errors by, by your city manager. As the, as the mayor mentioned in his introduction, counsel before you is a motion requesting your approval of ordinance fourteen thirty-three granting Central Lincoln PUD an exclusive electric franchise for the city of Toledo. Setting the franchise fee and revoking ordinance thirteen sixty-one, which related to the previous franchise that was, that was executed. So as I mentioned, on April twentieth, twenty fifteen, the Toledo City Council adopted ordinance thirteen sixty-one to the electric utility held by Central Lincoln PUD. The passage of that ordinance increased the electricity, the electricity franchise fee from four and a half percent to five percent for both industrial and residential users. It also clarified that the city had extended the previous exclusive franchise agreement that was issued through ordinance thirteen forty with Central Lincoln PUD. In that ordinance thirteen sixty-one, it expressly stated that a new franchise agreement would be negotiated after that extension to the agreement that was set to expire in June, twenty twenty-one. No such extension was negotiated and the parties have been operating under the terms of that previous agreement since it expired. So I'm very happy to bring forward to you this evening an updated franchise agreement. This agreement keeps the, the five percent that was enacted by the previous ordinance. It also provides the city, so that, that five percent is a percentage on the, the revenues collected by Central Lincoln PUD within the city limits of Toledo. So ordinance thirteen sixty-one includes an opportunity for the city once annually to request financial documentation from the PUD to verify their calculation of that five percent. Not that we don't trust our friends at the PUD, but it, it's an opportunity for the city to be good stewards of our budget and confirm the revenue that, that we're, we're getting is, is correct. So as you're probably aware, the resolution thirteen oh five, which council passed on June first, twenty twenty-one. Is established a ratio for the collection of electric utility fees. That ratio splits the, the total collection of fees by a sixty forty percentage, sixty percent going to the general fund, forty percent going to the street fund. So just to give counsel an idea of, of what that revenue can look like, in your budget for the current twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. You budgeted seven hundred and forty-five thousand in projected revenue for the general fund, the sixty percent. And five hundred thousand for the street fund, the forty percent. So it's a little over a mil, one, one and a quarter million dollars currently projected in, in franchise fee revenue for the, for the city. So the ordinance that is for your review this evening and consideration has been reviewed and accepted by the PUD. Reviewed by myself and reviewed by your city attorney. So it's presented to you for your consideration this evening. It would be effective thirty days from your, your vote this evening if you choose to approve. Eric Chambers, who is the Director of Employee, Customer and Community Services with the PUD, is in the audience this evening. If you have any questions for the, the PUD in your consideration this evening.
Do you all have any questions?
No, but can we just, hi Eric?
Hi.
You, you have to understand, reading through the packet, and I, I told the city manager this earlier today. It was just interesting, I kept going, how far back are we going with these? And they go back almost to when I was mayor the first time, not quite so. I was reading a lot of history in these. And it was twenty eleven was when resolution thirteen oh five, not twenty, not twenty twenty-one. Just clarify your statement.
Just another, just another, just another typo by.
Herbal typo.
Herbal typo, I like that, herbal typo, I think we should trademark that.
No, I think it's probably already done by somebody somewhere. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments, would you like to ask anything of Mr. Chambers? Right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Public comment available for this?
Yes, is there anyone in the public that would like to address counsel on this subject?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Hello, my only concern would be, I know that we've tried being able to do independent hookups for solar. And I don't know if that's going to be a problem in the future, if we try to get independent solar power coming in. And I'm wondering if we could start working with PUD on being able to hook back into the grid. That was first started with PUD. I'm not sure exactly why it stopped, how we were able to as homeowners produce power to feed back into the grid, offset our power bills. And so I would like for, you know, for us to all start looking back into how we can become more equitable in these things, so thank you.
Mr. Chambers, you indicated you would like to respond.
Mayor, Counselors, Ms. George, we'll be happy to hear that, that she is able to provide power at her residence or any residence in our service area. We do ask people to enter into a net metering agreement with us so that when you're, when you're generating power at your residence, if you don't have the correct shut off switch, it could, it could put reverse load onto the, the system, so when the power's out and our alignment are working on it, you don't want to have load that you don't think is there for obvious safety reasons, so.
when the power's out and our alignment are working on it, you don't want to have load that you don't think is there, uh, for obvious safety reasons. So, um, we do ask people to work with us on those, but, um, absolutely happy to enter into those agreements. Um, we basically purchase the power from people who generated it at the same rate that we pay the Bonneville Power Administration for our wholesale power that we enjoy here. So, um, if she has any questions about that, uh, just call Central Lincoln and, and ask for the Energy Efficiency Group and we'd be happy to help her out.
Cool. Thank you, Eric.
You bet.
Anyone else who would like to address council? Jackie, did you have a question?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 1433 granting the Central Lincoln People's Utility District an exclusive franchise to construct, maintain and operate an electric utility along streets and other public ways in the city of Toledo, setting the franchise fee and revoking ordinance number 1361.
I second.
It's been moved by Frank and seconded by Andrew to approve ordinance number 1433 granting the Central Lincoln People's Utility District an exclusive franchise to construct, maintain and operate an electric utility along streets and other public ways in the city of Toledo, setting the franchise fee and revoking ordinance number 1361.
Councillor Burns?
Yes.
Councillor Kaufman?
Yes.
Councillor President Mix?
Yes.
Councillor Keating?
Yes.
Councillor Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Cross?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Do we need to read the ordinance by title twice? Nope. All right. It sounds good to me. All right. Next up is reports and comments. We'll start with the Toledo Police Department. Chief, what do you got?
Uh, most of my comments are in the, uh, in my report that I've submitted to you guys. Uh, there's nothing new beyond that, though.
Good. Any questions for the chief? Keep doing what you're doing. Jackie Burns, do you have any questions for the chief?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Fire Department?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Chief Lepoff is on a well-deserved vacation this evening, so the report that is in your packet, uh, just to, just to let him off the hook, the report that's in your packet was not prepared by the fire professional to my left. Uh, so I'm sure he can answer any questions you may have on the fire department, but I would ask any questions that you may have on the report in your packet, um, direct those to me and I'll get them to Chief Lepoff. But, uh, Assistant Fire Chief, uh, Larry Robeson is here if you have any general questions on the department.
Any questions, councillor? All right.
How you doing, Larry?
Doing all right.
You're supposed to direct that.
It was a general question.
That's okay. Oh, Mr. Mayor, we, we have a, we have a, a hand, uh, in the virtual audience. I just wanted to mention that this is a, a time for staff reports. It's not a time for, um, questions or, or comments from the, from the audience. So just want to pass that on the record before you move on to the next, uh, department head. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next, I, next is Public Works. Any questions for Mr. Lormar?
Any, any highlights you wanted to share, Brian?
Initially, we were supposed to break ground on December 1st, uh, for the Southeast, um, Servant Water Line Upsizing. It's been, um, postponed to January 5th to get through the holidays and then be more of a streamlined, uh, job, less hangups. So that's all I've got for an announcement that was not on there. So.
Thank you.
I will say, I asked Brian a question about striping the pavement because I've seen a lot of people questioning. So for those listening, he's still working on it. He's just having a hard time connecting with the.
We don't have the striping capability to do that, the road striping. We can do striping for, you know, parking lots. We can do striping for those type of things, but we don't have the capability to do our streets. So, uh, we have to work with outside sources.
If, if I will add, when you guys gave me approval, I believe it was in June, to have a certain, uh, outfit do the striping, it was announced to them that we would be repaving part of Business 20 and then the likes of it. We'd like them to come back and do that portion once it was completed. They were given the dates, the completion date when it happened was given to them and we've been ghosted since.
I think I am.
I'll just mention really quick, uh, in relation to Brian's, uh, comment on the delay of, um, the Servant, uh, water, uh, water upsizing project. Uh, that was a request, uh, from the, from the contractor and we appreciated that they, um, you know, um, asked the city respectfully if we would approve that, uh, which in conversation with Brian, we kind of agreed with their, their rationale, but I did want council to know that that was a request rather than our contractor, uh, trying to, trying to tell us how, how, uh, the project was gonna go. So just wanted to acknowledge that.
Right. Any questions for the Planning Department? None? Okay. And I know I saw Harrison earlier, so for those of you that were worried about Harrison, it's online. Um, any questions on the library report?
Yes. Harrison?
Yeah.
Is there a class that you guys put on there to teach people how to use 3D printers? Cause I saw that you guys are, you know, people can come in and have a thing made there and you pay somebody else, but is there classes to teach people how to use 3D printers?
Uh, we don't currently have classes scheduled. We have one decently capable laptop. That's the one we've got hooked to the 3D printer. And, um, so if you call ahead, we can sit down with you, kind of introduce you to the software that we have, um, to do your own prints and, you know, we of course want, you know, you can leave things with us like a one-hour photo type of thing. We'll call you when it's done. But I'd love to have people come in and walk them through the process, cause that computer we have hooked up has Blender, FreeCAD, um, Bamboo's, uh, slicer program that the printer came with. Uh, we've also got a link to Tinkercad up on Firefox, um, on that computer. So folks can set aside time, call ahead to kind of sit down and do some design work. We haven't built formal, like, instruction around that yet, um, cause we're, we're still kind of learning what all that stuff can do. You can spend your life learning that. Um, so I would say if, if you want to learn to do it, um, stop in, maybe call ahead, make sure one of us is, is hanging around and we'll do one-on-one for that, is the short answer.
Perfect. I get it.
We have a, we have a few really great, um, and very active, um, 3D print artists in our community. We see them at, you know, the Art Oysters and Brews. Uh, we see them at the waterfront market, um, during the summer that the chamber puts on. Um, I know there's a really great one at the, um, Aquarium Village, uh, that's doing some really cool stuff and likes to be involved in the community. So I have to imagine Harrison, if there's a lot of opportunity for us to kind of engage some of those artists to come in, show us what they do and how they do it. Um, you know, so that folks can come in and play at the library. I like it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'll just mention really quick, I have a, a friend who lives in the San Diego area and she has, uh, three kids, five-year-old twins and a, a six-year-old son. And there's a, um, a farmer's market, uh, kind of, um, outdoor activity, um, that goes on on Saturdays near her home and she brings her kids there pretty regularly. And there's a, a 3D printer there that they'll, they'll print little, uh, toys for the kids right there on the spot and they're just mesmerized by that process. So I just, I'm, I, I agree with the council comments. I think that's a, a great, um, a great service that, uh, we're able to provide at the, at the libraries.
Have fun learning.
Absolutely. You're, you're city manager among them.
Dude, I've got a, I've got a 3D printer at home. I've had it for over a year and I've never turned it on. Cause I don't know how to do it.
Sounds like mills.
I've got it on my food processor.
I was gonna make granola bars.
Is that an intention that's for me?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Moving on. Human Resources. Any questions for Sean this evening?
I have a question. I was just very glad to hear at our last meeting that you accepted the position. Am I correct? You've accepted the position as full-time HR after class?
You are, you are correct, sir. Yes.
You are correct. Yes.
So, uh, congratulations. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
I felt the same way. I already groveled. I felt the same way reading over the, the information from last week since I was homesick in bed. I was just relieved that you accepted that position.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I don't know that we gave her much choice.
She still had to talk.
I didn't have a choice.
We needed that position filled for a very long time, um, since longer than I've lived in Toledo, as far as I recall.
Oh, yes.
So, uh, so having you here and, uh, the work that you've done with us as a council, the work that, um, that we've seen you do in the, in the time that, uh, that you've been here, um, I'm just, I'm just grateful to have you and, and have all the confidence in the world in what you can do to help our city. So very, very glad to see you. Thank you.
See, I'm not the only one genuflecting.
We've been looking for an HR person since.
A long time.
Before Eric applied for city manager.
Yes. That was a while ago.
And that was a while ago.
Yes. All right. Any questions for Judy in Finance?
Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
All right. Last, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, uh, would like to, um, echo the, uh, last statement from Councillor Kaufman and, and, uh, thank and, and recognize, uh, Judy for, um, all of the wonderful service she has provided since she has been, uh, a part of the, a part of the, the team since earlier this year and also acknowledge her, um, her ongoing dedication to the, to the city of Toledo. Uh, we had a candidate that visited Toledo a couple of weeks ago, uh, as an interview for our finance director position. Uh, we invited the, the candidate back for a kind of an immersive opportunity to meet our team and, and, um, kind of, you know, learn directly the, the, um, what the, the processes and, and things going on with our, in our finance department. And they initially accepted that invitation and, uh, that was gonna be yesterday and Monday. Uh, they reached out to me, uh, last, the Monday before and without sharing any of the, the specifics, they, they shared that there was a, a family, um, medical situation and they provided enough specifics that it, I could tell that it was a, a genuine, um, a genuine situation. So we, we were disappointed to, to lose a, a prospective candidate. Um, we have, uh, had some meetings this week with, uh, Jensen Strategies about, um, the, the process of, of reopening the position. We've got a, a plan going forward. Um, that kind of came with a, a, a planned timeline. And, uh, Judy has indicated that she is, um, willing and able to continue, uh, with the city through that, that timeline. So, um, just wanted to give you the update on the status of the recruitment as well as recognizing, uh, Judy for, um, being able and willing to continue with us and, and very appreciative of, of her continued service. Uh, with that said, councillor, I have a couple of items, uh, for you this evening. Um, so, uh, speaking with Mr. Peterson earlier today, um, there has been a request from your, uh, planning commission to, uh, schedule a joint meeting, uh, to talk about a couple of items. Uh, first off, the, uh, the results of the uh, parks survey that is currently underway, as well as some discussion on the traffic calming, um, ordinances that are, are being, uh, reviewed and considered by the, by the city. Um, so your planning commission would be, uh, meeting on February 11th. Uh, that would be the second, uh, Tuesday of February and Mr. Peterson was, uh, wondering if that evening would work, um, with council to, uh, schedule a joint meeting with the city council and the, uh, the planning commission. I'm seeing a few nods, but wanted to bring that to council. I'm sorry?
February 11th.
February 11th, second Wednesday of the month.
Wednesday.
Yeah. Um, so we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll go ahead and, and put that on the, on the calendar. Obviously that's a couple of months away, so if anything comes up on your schedules, uh, let us know. Um, they're flexible on that date, but just mention their regular meeting date, uh, as a starting point. So if, if any scheduling conflicts come up for you, just, uh, please let me know and, and we can be flexible on that. Um, your, uh, December 3rd, uh, meeting, just a couple of, of, uh, highlights from what you expect from that meeting. Um, we have, uh, scheduled an, an interview with the applicant for the vacant city council position and you'll be, uh, having, you'll have the opportunity that evening to, um, you know, conduct a, an interview with the, the applicant and then you'll be asked to consider whether to vote to appoint that individual, uh, to the vacant seat on the, on the council. Uh, staff at our last management, management, uh, meeting received an updated presentation, uh, presentation from Scott Edwards Architecture with some updated, uh, proposed floor plans, uh, for the Civic Center, uh, building. Um, we were really impressed with, uh, so they had given us their original concepts. We gave them some feedback, asked them to come back with some revised, uh, plans and we were really impressed with what they had come up with. So, um, they're, are scheduled for that December 3rd meeting to present to you what they have developed so far. Um, we asked them to come up with some preliminary, um, range estimates for cost. Um, they, they had three floor plans that they presented to the, to the staff. Um, we asked them to add a, a second option, uh, based on one of them. So you'll be presented with four floor plans. Um, we're asking that, uh, you give guidance to the, the staff and the consultant on, um, you know, which one or ones you like, and then they will take the, the ones that you select, um, and, um, come up with a, um, a specific pricing plan on those ones that you indicate you're interested in. Um, the goal, uh, will be to have, um, a, a detailed, uh, cost breakdown of the floor plans that you select by the end of the year so that the city can go to the next legislative session and ask for, uh, state support for that project. Councillor Sylvia, I saw your hand.
I assume you're gonna give us like plenty of time to look over these, send it to us in advance long before the meeting?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And thank you. I didn't, I didn't specify that clearly, but I, uh, they did, uh, they provided, and I can, I can send copies to council. They provided the three-floor plan updates that they put together. I can send that to you all, uh, right away. And then when we get the updated one, be happy to forward that on.
Please do.
Perfect. Absolutely, sir. Um, the, uh, Homie House has provided, uh, me with the documentation for their fundraising, uh, efforts for the matching funds. So, uh, we will have an RCA on your December 3rd meeting to request your approval of the, um, expenditure of that additional 10,000, uh, that you, uh, earmarked for Homie House earlier this year.
Is a, is a further, uh, RCA, this is just for clarification, um, is a further RCA required? If I believe that we ultimately stipulated that that money had conditions that if they met would be made available to them. So in a sense, I guess I'm wondering, was that not sufficient in action by council already?
It, it was not in that council needs to, uh, affirmatively declare that they met the criteria that you set. So, um, yeah, thank you for that. Good question, councillor. And, and so, yes, that is why we are bringing it back to, for you to, uh, take a look at. I have confirmed, uh, with Mr. Watkins that he will be here that evening if you have any questions or, um, you know, want to, want to give, uh, want to give kudos to, uh, to Homie House. So I will, uh, the, the documentation, um, as well as an RCA will be in your packet for December 3rd. Um, and then we are anticipating, uh, I, I emphasize that word, uh, but we are anticipating having an updated employee handbook for, uh, council to, uh, take a look at for the December 3rd meeting. Mr. Mayor?
Will this one be on paper and not on stone tablets?
Very much on paper, yes, sir.
This one won't, this one won't even be on paper. It'll be just totally in the cloud.
It will be a digital file. If you ask us for one on paper, we can provide. But yes, it will be, it will be current technology. Thank you, sir. Um, at this time, councillor, we, uh, do not have anything, um, so the, the, um, issue tracker that got in the agenda packet has since been updated. At the moment, we don't have anything on the December 17th, uh, meeting. So unless something comes up between now and December 3rd, I will ask you at your next meeting to consider cancelling your December 17th meeting. Um, obviously if something comes up, we can keep that on the schedule, but just letting you know that there may be, um, a, a, a change to the, the calendar. However, I see Judy's hand, so, uh, maybe she's gonna tell me she has something. Judy, go ahead.
Yes, I, I don't know if you recall, but I mentioned that the auditor was going to be with us on December 17th.
Perfect.
Thank you, Judy. I did remember that you mentioned that, but in my head, I had it on December 3rd. So thank you for the reminder. And councillor, I retract my previous statement. We will have, uh, we will have your regularly scheduled meeting. Oh, yeah. We, we, uh, we will have your regularly scheduled meeting on December, uh, 17th. The auditors, uh, will be here for a, a discussion on, uh, the, uh, the audit and, and any priorities the council may have. Uh, and Judy, thank you for the reminder. Uh, and then councillor, just to, to give you, uh, an update, um, I, uh, I will be out tomorrow and Friday. Uh, my, my mom's side of the family has decided to schedule, or to, uh, celebrate Thanksgiving a week early so that, uh, there's parents and grandparents and, you know, uh, so we're, we're celebrating, uh, this week so that we all have less, uh, less number of people to visit next week. So, um, I will be out of town. I will be reachable, uh, and my. So I will be out of town. I will be reachable and my staff knows how to get a, get ahold of me. But just wanted to let everybody know I will be out tomorrow and Friday. I did mention earlier, I will be out Wednesday, the, the 26th, the day before Thanksgiving as well. But I'm always, I'm always reachable to you or the, or the staff if anything comes up. With that said, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my city manager report. I'm available if any counselors have questions.
Any questions, counsel, on that or the issue tracker?
No.
On to council comments. I'll start with Counselor Keating.
Couple of things. One tiny little thing. I was starting to type this into an email and then I was like, oh, this is technically city business. Let me break this to a council meeting. I have a request or a suggestion that I wanted to make on sort of an operational aspect of our website. And that is that I, for external links and links to documents, let's activate that setting to have the documents and external links open in a new, a new tab or a new window. Just as somebody who spent a lot of today, kind of going through a lot of our past meetings and past documents, as I was thinking about some of my remarks for tonight, I very much noticed, as somebody who does a lot of website design stuff, that's one of those little things that can be quite a nuisance for people who are trying to access information on our website. Because when say PDF opens in the same tab, it keeps you from being able to get back to where you, where you were.
I will tell you, I've, I've experienced that, that nuisance as I've explored our website. My, my experience with Civic Plus websites in the past has been that when you create either a new document or a, a new link, that you generally have to, when you do it, click in, click that button in that item. So it's not a, a one-click setting unfortunately. So it'll, it'll be an ongoing project, but I, I agree with that.
And more for thinking as we go forward to make sure that we're doing that on, on the links.
Absolutely.
And, and I also just wanted to, I'm only remembering this now, but did we, when we hired Jensen to do the after-action report, I could have sworn that one of the deliverables was that they were going to build a webpage on our site that was dedicated to that after-action report. Am I correct that that was one of, because, because we had talked about how informing the community about it was an essential part of its design. And I believe that that was one of the things that we approved.
I think so. I don't know if it's exactly that, but they said something about putting something on the website so that, so citizens could get access.
At least a, at least a statement and a link.
And a page on our site that is dedicated to it. So I did want to also, now that I'm remembering this, I did also want to ask for an update perhaps at our next meeting about just confirming that, that is happening. And also to kind of ask to at least confirm on council that, that is something, that after-action report is something that we do want shared with the community. So let's make sure that even if we don't have something, maybe we as a council, I would hope, could agree that it's something that we should at least make sure is on our website somewhere.
Right. And, and thank you, counselor. I, I want to acknowledge my, my part in, in the fact that it's not up there yet. You, to clarify one thing you said, and it was probably just a slip of the tongue, but it wouldn't be them building a page on our site. It'd be them providing the, the information to us to do that. They have provided that, that information. They also provided a proposal and some information on how they might support the city in that follow-up, uh, community engagement. And I haven't had the chance with some other things that have come up on the, the schedule. I haven't had a chance to have a, a follow-up meeting with, with Eric and Sia about that. And I had made the decision to wait until I had that, that opportunity. So hearing the feedback from council tonight, we can go ahead and, and get it out there on the website. And then I will bring back to you if there's a, if there's a proposal for further engagement with, with Jensen, we can bring that back to you at that point, but.
My recollection of it was that it was part of the original scope of work and that, and, and I think if this, if my recollection of it is accurate, then I think, you know, we all kind of dropped the ball a little bit on it. And that was that the page would be a place where we would provide updates on its progress and some of the key information around how it was being.
You're, you're absolutely correct that the page was, was part of the scope and, and they fulfilled their responsibility there and.
But we've also had some limited capacity.
Correct. Yeah.
That's, that's very fair. I don't, I don't need to, I don't need to put it on anybody. It's just to say, I think that was something that we had, we had spent some money on. We had put some good intention behind, but I'm realizing now that we really, we didn't get that.
It's one of, it's one of those things that stayed at, at its spot on the list, but a few other things. And I, I appreciate that you, I, I appreciate the recognition of, of that, counselor. And I just, I provided my comments to make sure that you didn't think that your consultant had in any way not fulfilled their, their, their responsibility.
It's been a challenging 2025. Two other, two other things that I, I just want to also get to. One is I wanted to provide a clarification from our last meeting where I had suggested that council should at least discuss the possibility of an investigation into allegations that were made about Mayor Cross's behavior. There are some very important differences between a criminal investigation and one that the city council might consider as it relates to our city, our city charter, our city council rules, the values that, you know, that we, that we adopt there as a council and, and try to hold ourselves to. The reason I had suggested that we have the conversation, I still think that we should have the conversation, is because the statement that was submitted by a former city employee that I personally held, hold in very high regard and, and I believe most of, most of our city does, included some allegations about our charter, about our council rules and our values that are not really about the criminal justice system. And that's a very different type of investigation and very different type of allegations. So while I absolutely respect Counselor Mix's, you know, comments about letting the criminal justice system do its own investigation and letting those matters work themselves in the proper, you know, forum. I do think that it is incumbent on us as representatives of our city who are supposed to be upholding the charter, upholding our city council and recognizing that accountability is one of the core tenets of our, of the adopted values of this council. I do think that some form of investigation, and that scope doesn't have to be as big as, you know, the $30,000 dollar investigation that involves, you know, a, an outside, you know, big comprehensive thing. I don't know what that looks like, but I do think that we as a council, and I would ask that on our December 3rd agenda, we at least have a discussion item to determine whether or not an investigation is warranted. And if so, what the, say, scope or what the expectations or desired outcomes of that investigation should be. This is, this is not meant to be anything other than honoring that a former employee put themselves into a very difficult and vulnerable situation by coming forward with allegations against, against the mayor or any member of the city council. And, and also just respecting the fact that accountability is something that we all claim to believe in. So I just want to make sure that we are, we are honoring our own, our own values and, and, and at least having the conversation and, and not just putting it aside while other, while other things work themselves out. That's, that's all that I have for tonight on, on kind of city business. But from the conversation that we were having earlier about DHS, there's a quote that's been running through my mind a lot today that I just wanted to share here. And it's from Abraham Lincoln's first inaugural. "The mystic cords of memory stretching from every battlefield and patriot grave to every living heart and heartstone all over this land will yet swell the chorus of the Union when again touched and surely they will be by the better angels of our nature." This has been resonating with me a lot lately because it is ultimately about in times of division turning through our conscience and then through our, our sense of humanity and caring about one another. So thank you. I know this is much more council comment than I usually do. So thank you, Mayor. Patience.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Burns, do you have anything tonight?
I do. Yes, I very much do. So I've been thinking a lot about all the different events that happen throughout the year and all the people that it takes to pull off these events. And with that in consideration, I, I was, I've been thinking about a volunteer appreciation, something, whether we have like maybe a banquet, an awards kind of a thing, because we have volunteers that do go above and beyond. And yet, you know, they just kind of go unnoticed. So it's something that I would like to explore and really find out what, what y'all think about it. Every, every time I've talked to people, you know, that have different events going on, well, we can't get any volunteers. We can't. Well, we, we need to honor them and appreciate them. And I, I don't know that we necessarily do. And that is all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Jackie.
Yep.
Counselor Kaufman?
No comment.
Counselor Sylvia? Counselor President, next.
I'm gonna address something that Andrew said. I believe that it would maybe be a good idea for us as a council to have an executive session to be able to discuss whether or not we want to have an investigation. And I mean, I think it, I, I, I think that it may be best to be done in an executive session. And I think I would be willing to certainly have one as a council. I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
Is it grounds for an executive?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then let's have one.
There, there are components that qualify.
Counsel, would you, would your consensus be to have that at your December 3rd meeting? I think was your suggestion. Counselor Keating, is, is counsel, is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Cause we have it at the end of the meeting, instead of the beginning of the meeting, so that we will hopefully have a full digest.
Yes. Not a problem. All right. We'll make sure that gets on the, the agenda for the end of the meeting on December 3rd.
Um, sure. Is there anything else I want to say? I think that's all. I am, I, I think that's all.
The only comments I have tonight were essentially said concerning the Newport situation. And I know it was alluded to, but that fish, that helicopter impacts this community as much or more than it does Newport. Cause we have the largest bulk of those fishermen living out here in Toledo and in East County. And I don't know if any of you have been around when we have lost a fisherman or have known any of them. It is devastating to this community. And we cannot, we cannot idly stand by and watch this happen out of what I consider to be negligence. So I hope that that is also part of what we're going to discuss on Monday is the helicopter and what it actually, what it actually physically means to the security of our citizens and our residents out here in Toledo and in East County. Is there any future agenda items we need to add? All right. I think we discussed that earlier. With that, we are adjourned.